...approval, any further discussion here in CNN, I'll just beg please say aye.
Aye.
Post. Thank you. Article number twenty-nine. I'm sorry? To see if the town will accept to add a ballot question at the next regularly scheduled town election to modify sections three to seven inclusive of chapter forty-four B of the general laws otherwise known as Massachusetts Community Preservation Act by modifying the surcharge of real property for the purposes permitted by said act including the acquisition, creation, and preservation of open space, the acquisition, preservation, rehabilitation, restoration, and historic resources, the acquisition, creation, preservation, rehabilitation, restoration of land for recreational use, the acquisition, creation, preservation, support of community housing, and the rehabilitation, restoration of such open spaces and community housing that is acquired or created as provided under said act, that the amount of such surcharge of real property shall be one percent of the annual real estate tax levy against real property commencing at fiscal year two thousand and nineteen, and the town hereby accepts the following exemptions from such surcharge permitted under section three E of said act: property owned and occupied as a domicile by any person who qualifies for low-income housing or low to moderate income senior housing that town has defined in section two of said act; class three commercial and class four industrial properties defined in general law fifty-nine, chapter fifty-nine, section twenty-two, I'll strike that, general law chapter fifty-nine subsection two A, removing the following exemptions: a hundred thousand dollars of the value of each taxable parcel of residential real property, a hundred thousand dollars of the value of each taxable parcel of class three commercial property and class four industrial property as defined by section two A of said chapter fifty-nine, submitted by Gordon Scott. Thank you. Go ahead, Mr. Scott.
Gordon Scott, too Joseph App, Drake it. Tonight I put forward, what you have in your handout is the original motion I put forward. I went to the selectmen's meeting a few weeks ago, and under general counsel recommendation, I made the changes as amended, basically just to add, to make it clear, this article will only to be able to add a ballot question at the next regular town meeting, and it will not change the law as it is currently, and I will also be removing the zero percent at the first hundred thousand restriction, that's in the original document that you have in front of you. So those are the changes that are making to the article twenty-nine. Just to speak briefly about this, for those of you that don't know, it's been a pretty heated debate here tonight, Community Preservation Act, it was adopted here in Drake at May seventh, two thousand and one, first charges, first surcharge in two thousand and two, total Drake it taxpayers nearly four hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Last year the surcharge went up, has been up because it goes up at two and a half percent every year, is now eight hundred and fifty-eight thousand from last year. The state match in two thousand and three started out as an equal match of one hundred percent of the four hundred and fifty, that number is now down to one seventy-six. The average Drake it real estate taxpayer pays a real estate tax of four thousand three hundred and fifty dollars, the current two percent surcharge costs them eighty-eight dollars a year. I'm proposing a change of that two percent surcharge down to one percent. This would obviously reduce the CPA tax from eighty-eight on the average to forty-four dollars. The amount of the current CPA reserve is approximately four million dollars, and I believe now is the time to change the surcharge. Next year we'll be in line to receive approximately nine hundred thousand dollars with a state match of one hundred and eighty from the taxpayers. My proposal will reduce that amount to four hundred and fifty thousand with a state match of ninety thousand. With more cities and towns, now one hundred and seventy-two ratifying the CPA tax, this is causing the state matching funds to decrease dramatically. In fact, in two thousand and seventeen, the match would be twenty point five eight percent, down from that hundred percent in two thousand and three. The recent tax increases such as additional technologies in schools, school renovations both at Drake it High School and Grand Lowell Technical High School, and the upcoming, as we saw tonight, the water drainage fees that we're going to be paying next year, the taxpayer could definitely use some relief when it comes to taxes and surcharges. I understand the value of the CPA, and I'm not here to argue against it. I also understand the amount of money currently in the fund is pretty substantial. My proposal will not eliminate the tax, will simply reduce the amount, exactly what the state has done in providing matching funds to the city and towns of Massachusetts. Speakers will follow me, and will tell you how critically important the CPA fund is for our town, what great projects have been done with the money and the like. I will not and do not argue with them. Others will ask you where you can get a twenty percent money on your money. This will not change. We will still get money from the state at a rate of twenty point eight six percent, so this is a moot point. All I'm asking for you to do is add a question to the ballot that will give voters another chance to choose if after sixteen years they would still like a two percent surcharge, only at a slightly lower rate. I would appreciate your support on this more than article, and hope that you will support my views I've shared with you this evening. Please vote yes for democracy and yes on article twenty-nine.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion on the amendment? No, I will have a second. Do you want to speak?
Again, Brian Lawd, sixty-one, Surrey Lane, former vice chairman of the Community Preservation Board, member. I did remember sitting in meetings with Lawd, Laura, and Jim Cobb, we'd sit there and we'd argue over paying twelve thousand dollars per acre to purchase the development rights of land, and it seems, you know, we've done a lot of great projects, you know, we've preserved a lot of good land, the Dillon-Mackinney Park was a great project, the Richardson purchase on Bridge Street was a great project, but it's kind of turned into a slush fund again, and I'm going to use the Bridge Street Richardson property because back in two thousand and twelve, the town voted, the sole purpose of getting two hundred seniors off the waiting list over at the Housing Authority, and that property was going to be turned over to the Housing Authority, and then the town later voted for three million dollars to help that project along. Well, that's not happening anymore. What they're doing now is they're giving those funds to private or nonprofit developer. That's not the town meeting voted on. The Veterans' Pocket concessions here, the community joined together, and we built that bathroom garage and snack shack of thirty thousand dollars out of taxpayers' money. Now that we've got so much money on CPC, we bought, we built the one at Warner Hall Field, I think cost about five hundred thousand, we built another one over at the high school. It just, it's turned into a slush fund, we just gave away two hundred thousand dollars, up to two hundred thousand dollars today, it's just, it's time to put it back to the voters in Drake it and let them decide and give them an opportunity. It's not what we voted on back in two thousand and one, it's time to put it back to the voters. Thank you.
Does anyone else want to speak on this amendment? Name and address, ma'am.
Laura Moss, twenty-five, Bon Road, actually new president, first meeting.
Okay.
Actually, I walked in and I got this in my packet. It's the only, it's the only one that has something like persuading the people on the Twitter. Everything else is informational. I want to know why.
Can you just speak into the microphone, ma'am?
Laura Moss, twenty-five, Bon Road.
You can take that out and put it right to your mouth.
I'm vertically challenged.
There you go.
So, I'm just curious, I just found here, you know, I walked in, it's the first time I've ever come to this meeting, six months new into the town, and I get this information packet, but this is the only one that's persuading the voter, and I want to know why. And I vote that let the people speak, you know, don't persuade us. Give us the information. Don't tell a senator.
I'll take it. You're here to speak. Ms. Merrill?
Karen Merrill, seven, I'd like to add, I have a couple of things about this. First of all, first question, would this end up being a special ballot?
No.
Election, or is it a regular election?
Moderator, my name.
I'm fine. Specifically laid out in my amendment that will be at the next regularly scheduled town election, so will not pass the town in a way.
Okay, good. Next part is, I know Gordy had mentioned about giving relief to the taxpayers, if you look at your electric bill, I know the town renegotiated the electric bill, and I can tell you that I've saved over a hundred dollars a year on my electricity, and I'm, anyone who knows me knows I'm pretty frugal. If I could save an extra fifty a year, I would take it, but I've lived in Southern California where everything is disappearing and going to houses, and I do not want that for our town. I want us to keep green spaces, I want us to keep woods, parks, whatever we can, and not build out into houses. Another thing is, I don't know how many people have gym memberships, but you can get all your exercise in everything that we've preserved. You can go riding on the trails, riding your bikes on the trails, anything you can do at a CrossFit, you can do in the land that we've preserved in this town, and I think a good investment to preserve a town and a history in this town and a way of life, just with being rural, we don't want to become a city. So, I, I don't necessarily have a problem with people voting on this again, I hope that people would vote to keep it. I don't like reducing it one percent, I'd rather it be at two percent. So, that's my opinion on it.
Okay. Thank you. Ms. Plummer?
Thank you, Don Plummer, Bridle County, Drake it, junior member of CPC, certainly do not intend in any way to speak against democracy, so there's a way to put initiative petitions onto ballots, that would be my recommendation. So I would speak against both the amended, it's hard to know exactly what we're talking about here, but speak against the amendment, let's just do an initiative petition and get it on the ballot so we can all vote on it. I would like to just say though, that anyone who knows me personally knows that my favorite saying is, thank God we don't get all the government we pay for, and the one exception to that though might be CPC. Fundamentally, what attracted me to, when strangely I was asked to join the board, was this idea that keeping Drake it looking like Drake it is really a lot of hard work, and it takes money to do it, and it takes a master plan to do it, and fundamentally, that's what CPC is all about, is making Drake it a better place to live, and I won't run, won't want, and will not run through the entire list of the projects we have done. I've already mentioned that, are you saying I'm out of time?
No, you can continue speaking.
I've already mentioned that, well, Drake it is a nicer place to live today than it was when I moved here thirty years ago, and a big part of that is CPC, so put democracy rolling. Thank you. Thank you.
Don Beerson, Spring Park Avenue, again, sorry, I never thought I'd be up here this often. Anyway, I'm not a Drake it native, I moved here from, I moved to Massachusetts from Connecticut. Marriage will make you do strange things, and at any rate, we settled on Drake it specifically because the strongest factor, we look all over the place, the strongest factor was, I saw Drake it next to a, an formerly industrial city of Lowell, and it was like walking from the old town that I used to live next to, called New Britain, Connecticut, lived next to, into my town of Kensington, and I crossed that line, and it was like a different, a different country, almost. Drake it had a farm, has farms, Drake it has wetlands, Drake it has individual homes, big homes, small homes, old homes, new homes. It was, the town I grew up in had cow farms and trout streams. I've gone back many, many times, obviously. The cow farm that we used to go to on Sundays and walk down to is now a massive housing development of McMansions. The very trout stream that ran through that cow farm that we fished on as kids in bare feet, walking through cow flops, is now, believe it or not, in a culvert under the streets, a trout stream. When I came to Drake it, I saw what I saw in my, where I grew up. That's all personal stuff, but eighty-eight dollars a year, roughly averaged, was that the, that was one of the figures given? If you have a few kids in the family and you're a parent, and you buy hunting, fishing licenses combined, you're almost paying more than that. Eighty-eight bucks a year, I'm sorry, that is a pittance for an investment in preserving the character and nature of the town. You want to make Drake it just like any other suburb, fine, but to me, it's worth eighty-eight bucks, eighty-eight bucks a year, and so, that's all.
Kathy Richardson, again, three sixteen, Richardson Road, I, it's no secret that I'm a fan of open space and preserving what we can in town, so I do, but I do appreciate Mr. Scott's article, because I do think that, my concern is that the CPA fund has been used differently than what we initially voted for here in town, I think I spoke to that even earlier this evening, but I guess my hope and my, my hope and my thinking is that we as the body politic have a much more effective way of controlling how CPA is funded, or used, CPA funds are used through this voting body, this voting mechanism right here at town meeting. If we feel that CPA funds are being abused, we need as the body politic here to vote on articles that come forward in town meeting in the negative if we feel it's an abuse of the system, or abuse of what we've been given to in our CPA funding. I'm not crazy about the idea about reducing it, because I do think when we look at projects like Beaver Brook and those kinds of things, the amount of money that we need to preserve, to buy those kinds of properties are in the millions, and so even though it's three million, seems like a great deal of money, when we're looking at real property and putting those kinds of funds towards a real property purchase, a million dollars can be used very quickly in a large purchase such as we just did in Beaver Brook. So I'm a little concerned that three million seems like a great deal of money, when real purchase options may be on the, you know, in the forefront, and we don't have enough to go and buy large tracts of land, but I do think as a body politic, we have a lot of control over how CPA money is spent right here in our town meeting, and I would encourage people to look at how CPA funds are being proposed to be used, and vote in the negative if they do feel that the funding is being abused in any way.
Thank you, Mr. Chris Stiles.
Good evening, George Stiles, twenty-one, McDelhough Drive, Drake it. I'm torn about this, CPC's done a lot of great things, you look around town, things that have happened because of CPC, we couldn't definitely do out of the general fund, it would be impossible, so we have this amount of money, and I'm glad, by the way, I disagree with some of you that expanded it to other things like recreation and historicals, preservation, but I look at it, I look at it that way, I say there's a lot of great things, and then I also look at it and I say we, our sewer bills have gone up this year, and I tried to keep those down, but our sewer bills have gone up, our water bills have gone up, your taxes go up two and a half percent every year, and that's just a fact. So as, as government grows, I mean, do we really need to grow this part? So I'm really torn about this, because I like CPC an awful lot, but I think it's been sixteen years, and I think it may be time to put it back to the, to the, to the voter in, in May of next year. Thank you.
Anything further? Does any, does anyone have any questions about the amendment itself? Because it not only reduces this, well, puts on the ballot to reduce the CPC, which is currently two percent, to one percent, currently the first hundred thousand dollars of your property enjoys an exemption from that tax. This would change that, this would do away, no? Then it's poorly written.
My, my original amendment had that stipulation in it, and that's what I removed with the amendment.
Oh, I see. Thank you, Mr. Scott, I wanted to clear that up, because that was very confusing to me. Thank you. Okay, move the question. Yeah, we're gonna, we're gonna move the question, sorry. All's in favor of, all those, go ahead, just be brief, please, Mr. Cowan.
You know Mr. Cowan can't be brief.
I heard you.
Here's a point of, a point of order I just wanted to address, are we voting on the amendment first and then?
Yes, we're voting on the amendment.
If the amendment passes?
No, if the amendment passes, we won't vote on the article.
Okay, so this is a voter petition, and you're substituting, you're substituting a new article, baiting for the old article.
The voter did that.
Yes, but it seems like a substitution to me, and if the voters who signed the voter petition didn't approve of that, then what authority does Mr. Scott have to change the article?
Amend any article in the town? We've received a legal opinion on that already from council, sir. It's an amendment, it isn't what you characterized it today.
Okay, well, there was a little pipeline article in, in two thousand and fourteen, which there was a different conclusion, but that, again, I understand, but let me, let me, let me say that I do share some of the concerns about the way that the materials were passed out, however, there's a lot of people in town who really do value the CPC fund, and if, if the town committee decided three years ago, when the balance of the fund was somewhere around seven million dollars, that we needed to keep the balance up in order to fund new projects, then now the balance is only three million dollars, the price of, everything goes up, so in order to continue doing projects at a rate which I think a lot of, a lot of voters would want, I would, I would support keeping the CPA the way it is, because that will enable us to continue to do some of the things we've done before and preserve the character of the town, as simple as that. Thank you. Mr. Scott, could you come up here for a second?
I'm told that you were the, you led the voter petition drive to put the original motion on?
That's correct.
And, and so you're saying voters now want to amend that motion essentially?
Correct.
Right. Thank you. Okay, are we prepared to vote on the amendment? Good. All those in favor of the amendment, please say aye.
Aye!
Post?
No!
Okay, we're gonna have to take a count. Yeah, we're gonna have to take the count, well, loud voices don't generally speaking mean that you win, and this is a good example, so all those who said aye, voted for, please stand up, and tell us, please count.
I'm gonna have a quorum count. I'm gonna get out of here. I can say that my heart is broken, Charlie. Telling you, next year when they, when they come in, they want a tax, and you have more like non-tax people, pull it again, they'll lose it. Well, I'm gonna ask for a quorum count. Quorum count.
But we, Brian, we evened each other out.
You should have done the reverse psychology and went against him.
Right?
All right, with the people, thank you, you can sit down if you voted for the passage of amendment. Those people who are against it, would you please stand up to be counted?
I saw the person there.
You can talk to you after. Yep, you and, you and, your hairless friend.
Oh!
Yes, we tested.
We should, we should, we should.
Yes.
All right, the count was ninety-five voted for the amendment, and one hundred and thirty voted against it, so we remember this to be it. So now we'll go to article twenty-nine.
Gonna vote on it. Quorum. Quorum count. Quorum count.
Yeah, there'll be a quorum count, but first we have to act on all the business of the town meeting, so I'm gonna defer that momentarily.
Right. Two fifty, because all.
Now, just understand something, if we have ten people stand up and call for a quorum count, we have to do it, and we can't act on any further, anything further, so that's.
Quorum count.
It's a problem. Yeah, we're gonna take a recess to talk about this.
Oh, please, no.
Everyone's leaving. Hey. Gonna have to do the town meeting over again.
He's kept it up, oh, but he has, does he have two fifty here? So he doesn't have a quorum. Quorum count, quorum count.
Who's standing?
It's late.
Quorum count.
You know, it's a shame, because there's only one other man to act on.
Seriously.
You really want to, you know, call for a quorum count, it's really unfair to the person with one zoning change. Yeah, I'm gonna ask the people who call for Yeah, I'm gonna ask the people who call for a quorum count to withdraw that. Okay, so how many, we've got, are you standing?
Yes.
You too.
So, now we have to redo the whole meeting?
Yeah, you can have a special election anyway, special one anyway, 26.
All I care about is my school, so honestly, keep it happening. As long as my kid's getting money for schools, that's all I care about.
That's gonna vote for the five.
How do we know the votes are right?
Well, nothing, all, everything that happened tonight is null and void. We should leave.
You know, we'd have been out of here if we just voted on the next water of business, which is a shame.
That's, um...
Just say no, folks. It's gonna cost $5,000 to $10,000 to hold another meeting to address...
Price of democracy.
Yeah, Mr. Bond, that's the price of democracy. You want to spend $10,000, you think that's prudent?
Hey, I tried to give you a raise, you wouldn't take it.
No. No, do you understand that, folks?
Coming back to 28th.
Yeah, just understand something. All the meaning, all the business that's been conducted at this meeting is good. All the votes are valid, okay? So, don't think that you're putting the kibosh on everything that's been done tonight because you're not. And historically, I've heard that said before, and legally, it's not true, okay? Anything that's been voted on is law. That's not what I said, sir. We had a quorum. No, sir, we had a vote, we had a quorum when the other votes were taken.
But not that vote. We did the count. I know I went to the vote, but, you know, math was a subject.
No one called for one, sir.
That vote doesn't count.
The vote doesn't count because there wasn't enough people?
You can't vote on the next one, you can't vote on the next one because we don't have enough people.
Why are so many people outside? Yeah. My understanding is, open meeting laws, if you don't have a quorum at the end, everything that's happened is null and void. Because Leo Goddard used to say that, if everyone leaves, everything we did tonight is null and void.
All right, we're to take a count.
Boy, I caused a lot of story, didn't I, Mike?
You gotta count the, can't count the guest.
Everyone's leaving. People are leaving.
Undocumented voters.
Let's leave. I'm gonna go to the bathroom.
I do gotta go.
I gotta go to the bathroom.
I? They're going out to the bathrooms counting people in there.